Our meeting will begin today with a consent agenda. The consent agenda is a means of expediting routine matters which come before the commission for consideration. The consent portion of the agenda is approved by one non-debatable motion. If any commissioner wishes to remove an item from the consent portion of the agenda, that item becomes the first order of business on the regular agenda. Now, I'd like to just point out that we are minus a commissioner and that's because we're trying to do some real double duty today. We've got official Secretary Bernhardt and others, Congressman Stewart are visiting Southern Utah and Mr. Almquist is taking care of those duties up on the Dixie National Forest for us and will be double teaming a little bit.
Well, very good, Mr. Chairman, as I reviewed it. If there's no objections, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda consisting of item A, consideration of auditor-approved claims for payment for payment for July 17th, 2019 through August 6th, 2019; B, consideration of regular commission meeting minutes of July 2nd, 2019, and July 16th, 2019, and work meeting minutes of July 16th, 2016; C, consideration of administrative adjustments, personal property; D, consideration of applications for property tax abatement; E, consideration of FY 2019, five-county association of governments' contract with Washington County Council on Aging or Aging and Nutrition Services; F, a consideration of ratification of the final agreement for the one-year, no-cost extension for the Warner-Draw Plan EA; and G, acknowledgement of publishing notice of adoption of ordinance number 2019-1143-0 and ordinance number 2019-1144-0 on Saturday, July 20th, 2019. And that is my motion.
Thank you, Commissioner. I will second the motion. Is there any further discussion on the consent?
No.
Hearing none, I'll call the question all in favor of supporting the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Onto our regular agenda and we'd like to welcome Ray Boyer for consideration of purchase requests.
Okay, we've got a few. The first one is for HCP, the Habitat Conservation Plan. They're looking to replace one of their pickups. They have chosen a Ford F-150 2018 model for $29,949, but their old pickup that they're replacing, which is a 2005 Chevy Colorado, they got a trade-in value of $4,000 for that. That brings that total to $26,248.
Okay.
The next one is for the library. It's for digital unlimited digital audio subscription for $48,000. The next one is for fuel, the dyed fuel for the roads department, in a total of $24,551.20. The next one is a blanket PO for building supplies for the sheriff's office in a total of $15,000. And the next one is a blanket purchase order for commissary supplies in a total of $45,000. Now, a little explanation on this one is barely approved, one of these, a couple of commission meeting ago, but the company changed their name, so we had to redo it within our system and do a new purchase order for it.
Reissued and it's not a duplication.
And we thought it would be appropriate to bring it again.
Could I have Joel step up for a minute and just explain? I think this is exciting about unlimited digital audio subscriptions and maybe you could just tell us a little bit how our community members benefit from this and what you've, what we're buying, Joel. Joel Tucker is our library director.
Joel Tucker, library director. Thank you. One thing that we're facing these days is ebooks are really on the rise in popularity, so we want to buy more ebooks, but a lot of the publishers are changing their format to where you can't buy an ebook outright and have complete ownership. They're going to a, you can either buy them for a year or buy them for like 50 checkouts for a number of uses. So it's kind of a limited use kind of purchase. So recorded books came to us, they would like to expand their offerings a little bit. We currently spend about $40,000 with them each year for individual titles, which doesn't come close to what they're offering now. Now they're offering for about $50,000, which is a discount. They discounted it from $75,000 for us. The ability to have access to all their content minus a few of the brand-new releases which will come in on a delayed kind of process. So it's really exciting that they're to have access to all of their content, 200,000 titles, whereas before we can only buy a fraction of that. This is, I think, a really good deal that we would be remiss to miss out on moving forward.
So does that mean that like the same title could be used by a variety of patrons at the same time?
Yes.
Where you'd really kind of, I think before you had only a certain number of checkouts that could be done even for the audiobook, right?
Correct. Before, under the old process, we would buy the title and that one title would be just like a hard copy book, one person you can check out at a time, and then when that gets returned, then the next person on the hold list could do it. With this process, we have access to all their materials and there's no hold list. So 50 people can check out the same item at the same time, really offer our services in a more streamlined process.
So it's like getting 200,000 volumes to the library, but you didn't have to, you don't have to re-shelf them or anything.
Yeah.
I think your processing time, this is really, I think, going to be the wave of the future and it's similar, I would assume, to Kindle and type of volumes like that that people are becoming more accustomed to. Well, thank you, Joel. Thank you for your pioneering leadership. We appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
Any other questions for Ray or for the purchase orders under consideration?
No, everything looks good to me, Mr. Chairman, and with your permission, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we accept the purchase request as been presented to us by Ray Boyer.
And I'll second the motion. All in support of the purchase request as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item number two, I guess it's time for Crimson Singleton again.
Actually, today we have a member of the management team from Hinton verdict.
I see that.
Mike Spilker, CPA, with him up here. He's going to make a presentation to you. We've left you a copy of the financial statements, but I wanted to jump in first and just tell him thank you and his team for their great work. It's been awesome working with them. They come in and spend a week with us and they're just really good to work with, so I wanted to make sure that he knew we really appreciated him.
Susan, and thank you and Kim for all of your hard work and the effort with our auditors. We really appreciate you.
You get to deal with the old guy today instead of.
Hey, that's good.
Mike Spilker, a partner with Hinton verdict CPAs. I'm here to report on the county's financial and compliance audit for calendar year into 2018. Sheriff Cox, Mr. Iverson, and county staff. It's a pleasure for me to be here today and I'll take, I wasn't sure if this number out to the side was the number of minutes I'm supposed to take, 59 minutes.
Can you squeeze it in or we can give you 181 on the next.
I'm going to keep it a lot simpler than that, for sure. You should have the bound financial statement and then some graphs that we've prepared. I'll go over the financial statement briefly just to mention our opinion letter on the audit. The, our opinion letter is found on page two through three of the, of the bound document and basically that states that we've audited the financial statements and the underlying transaction that support those numbers and reviewed the footnotes and all of the supplementary information and so forth and found it there. Barely stated in all material respects in accordance with governmental accounting standards. What we, that's what we call a clean opinion or an unmodified opinion. Also, in connection with the local government audit, we're required to issue a few other reports and those start back in the back on page 109. The first one is our report on compliance and on internal controls over financial reporting. And we're happy to report again this, this year that there are no findings, no recommendations that are required to be reported in accordance with auditing standards. So very positive note again for the county. We're also required to look at state compliance and that report is on page 111 and 112 and also same scenario, situation there. No state compliance findings or recommendations. And this year, as is in, in most years for the county, the county has expanded over $750,000 in federal funding, so we're required to do a federal single audit and there's a separate report for that. That's been filed with the Federal Audit Clearing House. Probably don't have a copy of that in front of you, but just to note on that also, there were no findings or recommendations in connection with that federal single audit. So very positive report. It's always a pleasure to report on audit with little or no findings, so. Okay, so that's the summary of our reports that we've issued. We, like Susan says, we also enjoy working with the county and, and your staff and they're very responsive. Just as an explanation, we're looking at a December 2018 year end and it's August, but the county has to record or report all of the component units, all of the districts that are within the county. And so we finish up the audit and then we kind of wait for those to come in and once those roll in, we're able to finalize all the reports and deliver it. So that's why we're here in August instead of May or June. So with that, anyway, we appreciate all the help and everything runs really smoothly. No hitches with the audit. And so with that, let's look at a couple of specific pages real quick in the financial statement that covers capital assets and long-term debt. That's on page 50 and 51. And then I'll go through these graphs real quick. Just to point out on page 50, that's the kind of summary of the changes in the county's capital assets. The main thing to note there is we had some construction in progress of about $2,800,000 that was finalized and capitalized in our buildings and improvements, and that was related to the jail construction project. And then you can see the other additions there in equipment and autos and furniture and fixtures and so forth of 1.1 million and 1.4 million. If you look at page 51, that's a summary of all the county's long-term liabilities. There were no new debt issues during the year. We basically just made the regular annual required debt service payments on those loans. So we have about 17.5 million in outstanding general and revenue obligation bonds. And then also maybe something significant to note is the change in the net pension liability there. It's, it's gone down from 15 million to 10 million. And that's not necessarily payments that the county made. It's, it does include those, but it's mainly a change.
This is an unfunded item that we're required to carry forward, go on the books.
Correct.
Portion of it.
Yeah.
So it's going, moving in the right direction then.
Right. The value of those assets went up and, and so that a corresponding $4.7 million dollar decrease there, so that's very positive. Some of the local governments that we work with in other states are, you know, they're still seeing increases in those liabilities and it's probably a lot bigger issue than in the state of Utah. Their, their plan is very well managed compared to some of the others. So with that, if there are no questions, let's look at some of these graphs here quick. The first one there.
What page are you on?
Is it on this little?
Yeah, well, let's see. It'd have been just like a nine-page.
Yeah, we have it.
Got that?
Here in the front of this, yes, I've got it.
Okay, so the first page there is the general fund. Take a look at that. It's, these are some five-year histories. I don't know if I'm seeing the. Thought that or not.
All says Hinton verdict.
Probably too late.
There's a lot of HB stuff here. You could just hold this up, we'll look at you.
Well, I'll just make some comments on this. The, the general fund shows a steady increase in cash and fund balance from 2014 to 2018. So we're looking like from 7.4 million to about 9.6 million. And that's basically a result of the growth in the county. When we look at the total revenues and expenses of the general fund, there's about a 24%, 25% increase from 14 to 18, about 5% per year in growth, so. Anyway, that's something pretty significant to note. It's, you know, a lot to keep up with and you have that kind of growth and so forth. And if we look at the general fund budget and actual report for the year, it shows that the county actually received about $1.2 million more than we anticipated and we spent about $560,000 less than we budgeted. So a very positive net increase for the general fund for 2018. Assessing and collecting, pretty consistent. I won't go into detail on that one. Pretty consistent trend analysis with that. If we look at the travel board fund and some of these, if you want to refer to the, the financial statement, probably look at page 18 and 19. So I'll be hitting some of those as we go through here. So the travel board fund is, is also showing increases over the last five years. There was a major increase in 2017. We had about $700,000 that was transferred out of the travel board fund to the sports and outdoor recreation fund, kind of a one-time thing. Well, that shows anomaly in that chart. If we look at the capital projects fund, that's, shows up on page 19. A pretty consistent cash balances and fund balances there. We had a slight decrease in the fund balance this year and a, and a significant increase the prior year. That's kind of expected to go up and down as you have your.
Building projects.
Yeah, you, as to, as you set aside money and then as those are completed and so forth. A pretty significant drop from 2017 because in 2017, we had the regional park building So the next thing I wanted to mention was the municipal services fund. That one is on page 86. That also, similar to the general fund, is showing significant increases in, in the cash and fund balance over the year, just kind of following the growth of the county. Barely significant decrease from 2017 to 18 because in 2017, we had the Highway 91, the UDOT grant and project that didn't, well, it was finished up last.
Chip sell as your project.
Yeah. So then if we look at the recreation fund, similar situation there, pretty consistent over the last five years. Outside of last year in 2017, we had a, a $2.5 million transfer to the capital project fund that, that related to that, that capital outlay that we just mentioned. The regional park project, yeah. So I think I'll skip over some of these others and go right to the, the final graphs here. If we look, this last chart compares all of the city, county's fund balances for the prior year. And when we talk about fund balances, it's a governmental accounting way of reporting equity, but it's not, it doesn't include all of the capital assets and the long-term debt. It's closer to a cash balance than, than a regular financial statement. But irregardless, all of the county's fund balances, other than your capital project fund and your corridor preservation fund are showing increases in the fund balance. So positive direction there and with.
Would that be because we have the state auditor of the year?
It's mine.
I only have a couple more months, Kim, I gotta.
So, yeah, and the decrease with the capital project fund, you expect that because you want to expend that out over time and do those projects and use that funding that's, that's there sitting in fund balance. So all the other minor fund balances are also up or, or fairly consistent prior year. So, you know, again, really positive report. Apologize that you don't have these graphs to look at, we'll get those to you. Are there any questions on anything I've covered or?
No, thank you, Mike. I've had a chance to review this before the meeting and I always appreciate your work product and how well it's standard and organized.
Thank you.
And the long relationship that we've enjoyed. Again, I tip my hat to our accounting team. They're just great to work with, our department heads and even at our employee level, it takes everybody working and being diligent to keep these numbers where we want them to be and appreciate that.
It really, you know, it really makes a difference when you have the right talent at the top and you have the right management and people consider counting and finances as important and it's evidenced with, you know, we audit over 70 local governments a year and we, we don't see this with all of them, I should say. And that's where it all starts, you know, you have to consider this stuff important and obvious that the county does, so appreciate that. And, you know, you're one of the larger entities where the state auditor's office frequent, we, we undergo reviews from them every three years and it seems like they always make a point to look at your audit when they come to our office to review us, so. And I'm happy to report that everything's coming out clean on our end too, so appreciate being here and you have my contact information if you have any other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate you.
Absolutely, Kim, please.
I just want to reiterate what Susan had to say. We're very grateful to have Hinton verdict as our external auditors. We have a great relationship with them. It's not like they do everything we want to do or what in that regard, but when we have changes we'd like to see or things we want to do different, you know, we call and what do you think about this? Is this going to pass muster when we get to the financial, to the audit? So we're very grateful for them. Crimson has kind of moved on with them, I think, at Dunn and Arizona and Victoria was our, the lead on this last audit. We're very grateful for their professionalism and being a partner with us. We consider them a partner. I mean, sometimes you think of auditors, it's like, oh hell, the auditors, you come, what are we going to do now, you know? But we feel like, you know, they're our partner and we appreciate the, and we appreciate the, the commission's support of us. We're, we, we take great pride in our financial statements and so we're grateful to have that support from, from all of you as we kind of prepare budgets and then move forward with the actual results, so thanks.
Thank you, deservedly so, Kim. Item number three, thank you, appreciate it. Item number three, consideration of participation in Utah Integrated Healthcare Pilot Program. Mr. Clark, you tell us about the item three.
So commissioners, the state of Utah is, is looking at ways that it can break down some of the barriers that have kind of arisen when, when government provides funds for mental health and, and physical health. So, you know, in our county, we have a Southwest Behavioral Health Department and Southwest Public Health Department and they have very different duties and, and funds flow in different directions.
And they're siloed to.
Yeah, and they, you know, it's, it's kind of separate. With the Medicaid expansion that the state of Utah is still figuring out and we're not sure when this law could happen, but they're looking at, as some of those new federal funds come into our state that are dedicated towards care, they're looking at, at trying to break that down and have an integrated model where, where people can get the funds and have that crossover, where it's more of a care, not is it physical or is it mental care, but it's just care. The state would administer the pilot program. It wouldn't be any additional burden or bureaucracy the county would, would take on itself, but it would, if, if the commission chooses to participate in the pilot program, then rather than send those funds to Southwest Behavioral Health substance abuse treatment, it would be, it would be kept in kind of that state plot where private providers would provide treatment, whether it was physical or mental.
Often there's some linkage they're finding out between those two and so actual separation and treating them as separate things doesn't always synergistic or the holistic output we're looking.
And, and sometimes the barriers that we have in, in dealing with one agency or the other makes it more difficult for the people to get the treatment because they're, they're running back and. So this is a pilot program, it, you know, who knows if this is the model that will, will work at the end of the day, but what's before you guys is, is if you guys would approve it, then the county would request to participate in the pilot program when those additional Medicaid funds become available in whatever form the state figures out.
This would be done in conjunction with a few of the other larger counties to help assess best practice.
Correct.
Perfect.
What I like about this, Mr. Chairman, is it's, it's really only dealing with the expansion population as we've mentioned, so it's a, it's a fairly, you know, small.
Projected 70,000 max statewide, right?
Statewide and so we're not talking about, you know, the entire Medicaid population in our county, we're only talking about the expanded portion of that, so that's, it'll, I think it's going to be a great pilot program and it, as we've gone to these different conferences, we talked about the, you know, the link between mental health and physical health and just how sometimes those silos don't get the patient the care they need and so I, I support whole heartedly going forward with this pilot program. Prove to, to be a very good test case.
You've led the charge on this, Commissioner, and I recognize that and you've put a lot of time in it. With your expertise and area of responsibility, would you like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve participation in the Utah Integrated Healthcare Pilot Program.
And I will second the motion, all in support of item number three, consideration of participation in Utah Integrated Healthcare Pilot Program. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item number four, consideration of resolution number R-2019-2495, a resolution appointing board members to the North Central Special Fire Special Service District Administrative Control Board. Mr. Iverson.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we always appreciate citizens that are willing to serve on these special boards and it, it is always amazing to me that we have such great people in this county that are willing to step up. The names that we'd like to advance or that I would like to make a motion that we accept is Duncan Reed, Brad, Brad.
Brady.
Brady Weaver and Rayan Reber.
Brady Weaver and Rayan Reber, um, to serve on the North Central Fire Special Service District with, uh, with their terms expiring July 30th, 2023.
I'll accept that motion and second it, uh. All in support of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item number five, consideration of resolution number R 2019 2496. A resolution approving a cooperative agreement between Washington County and the US Department of Agriculture Forest Service, Dixie National Forest for the construction and maintenance of certain forest road. I don't see, Mr. Whitehead.
I believe that Todd is, is going to speak for Ron.
Okay, alright.
Ron had to step out.
I thought Sue was all excited to.
Or Sue, either one.
We'll get the engineer and, and Sue can keep, Sue can keep him on track.
This is kind of our annual, um, Forest Service Agreement. Basically, we have a lot of roads that we have common use of. A lot of roads that are Forest Service roads that the county uses and county roads that get access to the Forest Service. Had a great relationship with them over the years of cooperating on maintaining those roads. Meet yearly with them and go over who's going to do what maintenance and who's going to pay for what. This is an agreement, keep that process going.
My understanding is that they have a crew that operates within the Dixie, it comes down and does what it can.
For a few weeks, a year.
Tells you what they weren't able to accomplish and you go out and help them out.
Yeah, they actually hired a contractor this year, the same one that did our, uh, bridge up in Pinto. They, they hire people sometimes too, to do some of the maintenance.
Right.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution R dash 2019 dash 2496. A resolution approving a cooperative agreement between Washington County and the USDA Forest Service, or Forest Service Dixie National Forest for the construction, maintenance of certain roads.
And I'll second, all in support of resolution R 2019 2496, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item number six, consideration, is Todd going to stay around for this or, yep, right there. Okay. Uh, consideration of resolution R 2019 2497. A resolution approving a change order for the agreement for the watershed plan environmental assessment for the Warner Draw supplemental wa- supplemental watershed plan project between Washington County and Bowen Collins and Associates.
Uh, this sounds terrible, it's $240,000 change order. But right up front, I want to say that the county's not paying for it, it's NRCS, we're just kind of passing through. And what it was is, there was a $600,000 contract plus, um, to do five major projects within the county to do the environmental work on them. Um, during the kickoff meeting, there were six other items that were added to that, uh, but the contract wasn't changed. Um, Bowen Collins did some of the preliminary work on those, decide if we were actually going to build some of those. And so, that's the majority of this is, one of them was a main street, uh, detention basin in Washington City. It's going to be a great access to them, been built already as a matter of fact. Still need to do some additional work on that, but that's going to save them getting flooded as bad as they have in the past. And so, there were some other miscellaneous work, the other major cost was Goldswash area down through Hurricane. Uh, they found that they couldn't build a big enough detention basin, uh, to, to handle the entire flow and so they're going to have to do some improvements down Goldswash, Goldswash area through town. Had to expand environmental work in that area. We agree with their cost that they've come up with, the NRCS has also reviewed them and scope change.
We've, uh, had a long and beneficial relationship with the NRCS, I think it was really cemented with the flooding of 2005 and 2006 and, uh, one thing about it, uh, our averages are kind of like this.
Yeah, exactly.
And these debris basins and flood work are very, very important for us and so we appreciate your work and effort with the NRCS in, uh, keeping us safe.
Thank you, they've been a great benefit to us.
It's great. Um, Mr. Chairman, with that, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution R dash 2019 dash 2497. A resolution approving a change order to the agreement for watershed plan environmental assessment for the Warner Draw supplemental watershed plan project between Washington County and Bowen Collins Associates.
Thank you for the motion, Commissioner, I'll second, all in support of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item number seven, consideration of resolution number R 2019 2498. A resolution approving the execution of a deed agreement between Washington County and the City of St. George regarding transferring of ownership of a parcel of real property and approving the execution of a quick claim deed, transferring ownership of the parcel. Kim, could you talk us through that one?
How much real estate?
I think this is a well, isn't it?
It's about this big.
Yeah, how much is point, point zero one?
Yeah, it's not very big, so it was a, a St. George City well and ended up being in the parking lot of a, a condo project and they've, they keep using the well. Uh, at one point, it got transferred to the City of St. George and through some other documents, got transferred back out of ownership.
In air.
In air, and then it came up in the tax sale because the people that owned the condo project weren't interested in paying the taxes on this small parcel. So, anyway, it came back to the county through the tax sale process and our recommendation is that now it gets back to the City of St. George where it belongs. Yeah.
Thank you, Kim.
Can we give them some of the roads that we have that are.
Maybe they'll take old 91 and pave that for us if we.
Possibility, I don't know how good of a trade that is for them.
If all it takes is a motion to give them things. Very good, Mr. Chairman, with that, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution, uh, number R dash 2019 dash 2498, a resolution approving the execution of a deed agreement between Washington County and the City of St. George regarding transferring ownership of a parcel of real property and approving the execution of a quick claim deed, transferring ownership of the parcel.
And I will second the motion, Commissioner, all in support of R 2019 2498. Transferring the parcel to the City of St. George, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item number eight, consideration of resolution number R 2019 2499. A resolution approving the execution of an agreement between Five County Association of Governments and Washington County to provide services to senior citizens in Washington County. Did I see Genie? Okay, alright.
Genie's welcome to take it. Hello, good afternoon, I'm Brian Akins from the COA Department. Um, so this is the, as you know, the annual agreement between, uh, Five County Association of Governments and, uh, the COA Department and it, um, is the source of the substantial amount of our COA Department's, uh, budget. And the monies are used for, um, a couple of different programs that we have, the home delivered mills, otherwise known as the Mills on Wheels program, and also the congregate mills and the, uh, supportive services that we render to our. Um, so, this, the amount is about $49,000 more, higher than the previous years. That's always a good thing.
Yeah.
That's about it unless anybody has any questions.
No.
This generally worked out quite well, right?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
The agreement's been in place, it's been working quite well.
Exactly, yes.
Alright, thank you, any questions for Brian?
No, I, I think it's, uh, it's a very important part of our, our COA program.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Well.
I think she has the next one there.
Oh, she's got the next one, I got her down on both of them.
With that, Mr. Chairman, uh, by the way, are we still giving, sending, uh, mills out to Iron County residents there in, uh, Newcastle from Enterprise?
Right, right now, we're not, there's no clients that are signed up on it.
Oh dang, I always like reminding the county commissioners from Iron County, you know, how we're taking care of their people, you know?
Gives us leverage.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, very good. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution R dash 2019 dash 2499. A resolution approving the execution of an agreement between Five County Association of Governments and Washington County to provide services to senior citizens in Washington.
And I'll second and, uh, call for the, uh, vote, all in support of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item number nine, consideration of resolution R 2019 dash 2500. A resolution approving the purchase of login equipment for the St. George Senior Citizen Center, you know, the only thing better than login equipment would be logging equipment.
Brew me off with login, I thought I am not representing logging at all.
Login equipment.
Okay, well, I'm Genie Johnson.
You have to have a few retired lumberjacks down there.
I know, I was so thrown off, I look at Shannon, I'm like, log, logging? Well, thank you for allowing me to come and give what hopefully is a quick explanation of a software that we would like to purchase for the senior center. And as Brian was stating earlier with the agreement with Five County, with that agreement comes a lot of reports on our end, in order to qualify for federal funds and state funds, we do a lot of spread worksheet work. So here, I just brought one clipboard and this is one of 55 clipboards that we have floating around the center. Because for every person that attends one of our classes, we get credit which turns into money. Okay, so, these clipboards, not only are they cumbersome and people get tired of signing them, but it also makes a lot of work for that secretary that at the end of the month has to redo all these names. Some of them will print off from the, some are dropped, some are added, but it's just a lot of work. So, with that, I would like to show you, um, let me just, if you've ever ordered a hamburger at McDonald's, this is kind of the same concept.
Kiosk.
Basically have a kiosk where our patrons can sign in. Currently, they come in, they sign up for lunch, they go to tap, they sign in. They go to stretch class, they sign in, they run over to the computer center, they have to sign in. Because we don't want to miss out on those funds, but what I'm finding is I can look at a classroom and I will have 40 people in there and only 28 people si- signed on this. Because you can't always tell a senior what to do. And it's a fact, so by capturing them, right when they come into the center, having a kiosk and they will have a swipe card, that swipe card will have their SAM's number that's connected to the state. So we can track exactly what that senior is doing, whether they're getting their blood pressure checks, their sugar checks, what classes they're attending, and we can get credit for all those things. Um, so if you look at that little picture there, that's basically what comes up. We have voted previously, I spoke with Nicole and we are going to go with the non-advertising method. It is a little bit more money, but we were, we've got a great advisory board, we had a very good turnout at our health fair where we earned a lump sum of money that will qualify to purchase this program. And we have, um, approval from them to use that money for this. Um, one of the other things that I wanted to go over is, it kind of occurred to me today, so I asked our secretary, I said, how long have we been using these clipboards? I've worked here four years. And she looked at me and she goes, well, we had them before we built this building. We've been using these spreadsheets for 17 years. And so, I kind of like to get in the 21st century and go with a database membership program. Um, I know there's going to be some growing pains with the installation of it. Um, implementing it will have some report problems maybe that we have to work out. I've spent 10 years in the tech industry, so I'm ready to take on that challenge and my name will be mud if this thing doesn't go, I realize that. Um, I know that 10 years ago, eight to 10 years ago, Chris said that she and Shannon looked into a database program, but at that time, I think they were a lot more expensive. The technology's come a long way and the price has gone down and it's more feasible to do it now. Um, other than that, do you have any questions for me? We'd like to implement this program.
I think it's great, uh, I think, um, I don't know if it was Nicole or Chris came and talked to us about it and to me, it sounds really good, especially better than those clipboards.
I think 17 years is plenty of adequate preparation, you know, to go to a, an updated system too, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for, for, uh, sharing the.
My pleasure.
Forward, we appreciate.
And good luck on, uh, training the seniors to, to log in with technology.
We, I have, I've, I've got it down, we're going to corral them, they can't get by the front desk until it's done.
Very good, very good. Thank you, Genie. I'll go ahead and make a motion on this, you've been making all of them. I'll let you second. I would like to, uh, support resolution R 2019 2400. A resolution approving the purchase of login equipment for the St. George Senior Citizen Center.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
All in support of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item number 10, consideration of resolution number R 2019 2501. A resolution approving the Utah Department of Corrections intergovernmental county jail agreement. That's been, being worked on and revised, probably quite a bit of.
Uh, it has, especially with a lot of the changes, the standards and stuff that's going on with the state with the contract inmates and I know on your announcement, it said ratification, but.
This is Sheriff Halsfer.
Um, it's not actually ratification, they sent us the contract on May 30th and it was received at our office according to their records. Um, but we have absolutely been unable to locate that contract and so when Kim Chip from the UDC contacted me a week ago Friday and says, hey, where's the signed contract? I says, what contract are you talking about? The one that we do every year for the contract inmates that we house. Um, so, um, he found out I was headed to Salt Lake for the Governor's Public Safety Summit, he met me there, delivered the contract. Um, I called Nicole quick, got Eric on the phone and so we've kind of been doing a rush and part of the reason for the push is that, uh, we can't submit for the reimbursement for the housing of the inmates until this contract is signed by, um, not only you, but also by the state of Utah.
We can't go doing a lot of rushing around, we've got a lot of rushing involvement in our.
Yes. Um, I will be, um, in meetings at the Capitol on Thursday, I've got to do an up and back trip for the, uh, search and rescue reimbursement board that I sit on. And so I will be hand-delivering it back to the state on Thursday if it is approved and signed by you. Either way, we're still housing the inmates.
We'll get it. Thank you, Sheriff, thank you for your, your attention and getting us brought to our attention and Eric, uh, will get this all done. Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution 2019 dash 2501. A resolution approving Utah Department of Corrections intergovernmental county jail agreement.
I'll second, Sheriff, just out of curiosity, about what is our average state inmate total?
Um, our total numbers right now is we're housing right between 130 to 140 state inmates.
Thank you.
I know that, uh, Susie Laffieli, uh, our fair director, was very appreciative of the inmates who were out, uh, doing so much work on the county fair.
Yeah, they, they've spent a lot of time over there helping prep and get everything ready and. Um, we've actually got it set up for them to assist with the trash cleanup and collection and then doing the cleanup each night once the fair closes down and stuff, so they're going to be busy the next week.
It was good because one of them had been there the year before. So he was able to say, no, this is a better way to do it and she was even more appreciative of the experience that he had there, so.
You know, one of the points I'd like to make is, is we don't make corrections in industry in Washington County, we, uh, we build a jail that we wanted to have large enough that we wouldn't outgrow it before we paid for it. And so, as county population has grown and our inmate population has increased with that, we've been decreasing the number of state inmates and I think it's worked well and, uh.
The original agreement when we built and opened the facility back in 1998 was that we started housing with 200 and figured that over the next 10 to 12 years, the county population would increase to where we wouldn't be housing, um, very many of them at all. Um, we paid the jail off in 2018 and we're still housing 140 of that original 200.
Big wealth for our numbers, not growing, that's right.
Often, often these, uh, state prisoners do so much work around our community, they're really good citizens when they're in your custody, Sheriff. I mean, we just wish them. I mean, we just wish them well. Once they they get out, if they could just take that good citizenship and and put it into the rest of their lives.
Well, they do more than just what you see out in the community with the, you know, work crews that are out in the public and working and providing resources. They also do all the cooking within the facility, all of the laundry services and a lot of those different things of just running the facility are done with some of these uh, contract inmates that we get from the state, so.
Hey, thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
You make the motion yet?
Oh, yes.
Thought you did. And I haven't seconded. I don't think we voted on it yet. So I'll second the motion. Uh, all in support of R two thousand nineteen twenty five oh one. A resolution approving the Utah Department of Corrections Intergovernmental Jail County Jail Agreement. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Commissioner, this is a big week. Uh, would you like to give us a little report on what's happening this week?
It's County Fair Week, everybody. So, boy, the fair, let's see, the parade starts uh, soon.
Seven o'clock tonight.
So instead of Saturday morning, we're doing it right now. Uh, we're going to have a little kickoff and an activity and a movie down at the.
Town Square.
Town Square. And then tomorrow, we have the ribbon cutting at seven o'clock. Followed by a free concert. Um, but I think we're encouraging people to get reservation tickets to that. That's Love and Theft, a country music band. And then um, we have just a lot of excitement going on out there. We have a concert tomorrow, uh, Blood, Sweat and Tears. For anybody who um, uh, it's a little, a little removed from some generations, but perfect for others.
Remember it like yesterday.
Yeah, I I could remember hearing those songs and so uh, it's going to be great. And uh, we just have a lot of music and and we've tried, we have, we've taken the food outside of the the covered arena.
Is outside now.
And outside, but we do have an air conditioned tent there.
Thanks for our Hurricane Valley. Uh, they've worked really well with us this year on. Are we getting our safety items cleaned up a little bit? Thank you.
Chief Coleman told me last year, or he's, I think he's told me that he couldn't walk through the food court before because it was just too scary.
His eyes.
He he didn't want to be responsible for anything that might happen. So I think we feel safer about.
That was no admission of liability.
Since nobody got hurt. Our last few years.
Chief, are we going to have some fireworks? Did I see your name on a volunteer application?
I haven't seen the applications yet. That's why I'm here. I'll talk to you after. Do you have fireworks over at the sheriff's office?
We'll get that signed tonight.
That's great.
I called you.
I'm glad that you're here because I was going to try to track you down. So, perfect. Okay.
All right. Well, this is awesome. Please come and enjoy the fair. Ed, good to see you.
We have the junior rodeo. Let's come back.
Yes, we have a junior rodeo on Friday night, uh, demolition derby on Saturday night, um, barrel racing on Thursday night as well. Boxing um, as as well, Friday and Saturday. And uh, we did get, um, we have new bleachers this year. So we're excited about anything new out there.
And a free um, petting.
Yeah, free petting zoo.
And I went out there today. It's amazing. I'm, the kids are going to love it. So, yeah, very big and awesome.
Super.
All right. Well, we reached the end of our agenda. Ed, did you have anything from the city of St. George you wanted to share with us?
Want to join in with this parade in a couple of hours, but we're going to end this like.
All right, well, thank you for volunteering. You're phenomenal city for our parade. And and we make it all work together. It's an amazing relationships that we have between our communities and county. It it makes us unique. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.